Also, we're in the regular meeting of Independent School District 695 School Board. We do, we have a little call please.
Director Satter?
Here.
Director Rice?
Here.
Director Carter-Sonin?
Here.
Director Rappi? Director Raga?
Here.
Director Casey?
Here. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the board? We have recognition of guests and visitors. Nobody for that either? Okay, item four. Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Support by Director Brian Satter, support by Director Raha. I would like to just add Robert's rules for our meeting protocol. We forgot to do that at the organizational meeting. So if we could put that under, let's make it eight J. Would you be willing to amend your emotions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reports. Ms. McDonald, you're first on the list.
We're doing it jointly.
Oh, she's the first in itself, probably. Are you doing it with?
We're a duet.
Principal Winter too?
No.
Well, she's on her own. And we have it up on the.
Yep, you're, you're up.
Alright, so this is just kind of a reminder, these were our math goals for this year, 2324. We went through this, Nina Carlo went through this earlier this year. But I just wanted to remind you what our goals were. And this is for achievement gap reduction. So what I really want to talk about is the strategies that are in place this year already to support this goal. So we're working on standards-based instructions aligned to the Minnesota State standards through Russ Davidson. Basically, has worked with all of our math teachers. He has sent us basically new curriculum that follows along with all the standards, highlighting the ones that are, the questions that are tested on more than the other ones, making sure the teachers are spending time on those instead of just kind of hitting it, throwing something up against the wall and trying to see what sticks. We're also using FastBridge for our younger kids, our seventh and eighth graders. STAR is for ninth through 12th grade. It just reflects high school store, our scores better. And this is a way to determine who needs what, what interventions they need. They're doing it three or four times a year. And then you can see the growth also, which helps on other goals that we have. Instead of using the MCA's, trying to use something that shows where they started the year and where they finished the year, instead of using that one-time test. Professional development. Again, we're just focusing on the Read Act, but also working hard with our math teachers to get that. The Read Act continues to change daily, it seems like. Whether, you know, when the high school is going to be needing to have that training and it's a lot of hours of training going on. Whether it's going to be in two years or three years, we're still hearing different things from the state. So working on that, special education supplemental materials, hands-on initiatives for the teachers. So we are making sure they are, have the equipment they need to understand mathematics. Kids learn a lot better with hands-on stuff. This one is for college and career readiness. And so again, we are using MCA's for part of this. Next year, we're gonna get out of that and use more of the, again, FastBridge and STAR testing. Just a reminder of what we did earlier this year. And strategies, we have a lot of different programs that we're working on to create this. Work-based programs through our pathways programs and community connections for work. Community and business co-ops for career planning. We've already made, how many connections do we have with the businesses?
Uh, I have a list, we can, one of the next.
Oh, shoot, she will be covering this. College and Career Fair is revived. We haven't done that in a while. College and the School CITS classes are being offered. We added a couple new ones for next year. One is through the nurse, a CNA program where they will get college credits, but they're also going to get certification in CNA by the end of the semester.
So, and I know those two worked really hard. And I know Mrs. Sarah Brest, our new school lesson nurse, worked really hard to make sure that she's eligible to teach this. This is the one where we brought the college over here. Now, we have somebody here that's going to teach that, which is awesome for us.
Saves a lot of money.
And I know that those two put a lot of work in there. So it's, it's a good thing.
The college and career cares, was that something that you guys just recently went and did over at the Masaba?
Yeah, I think it's right over there. I'm not sure about the other career fairs, Mrs. Jen.
Crowe.
Crowe, thank you. Jen Crowe is, is working on all of those and every.
The director of the program is actually one of my good friends. And she said the Chisholm School, the students were so good. And they did a big post on their Masabi Community College page for that. And she shared it with me, so.
Awesome.
Props to that.
Good, good. The other CITS class we offered, we added for next year is psychology. Turns out Jen Crowe can teach that also, so we got all the paperwork into the college for that. It still hasn't been approved, but we're pretty confident it will get approved. So we have that going on. And then wrap up to readiness, we do this every year. It's, you know, trying to focus kids on what happens after school. And it starts in seventh grade and continues on through 12th grade. So it's a good program that way. Graduation rate, again, last year it was, or two years ago, it was 90.2. We want it to raise 1% every year. Strategies for this, working very hard with the NLC for credit recovery options. And I have several, several kids, 11th and 12th graders that are doing that.
Did we send a few more in the last month and a half or so?
Yeah, I have six set up now.
So if you see our numbers drop in enrollment and other levels, that's they're doing any kind of study program, which is the best option for those individuals. So I just wanted, because I know our enrollment, we did lose a couple of kids there over the last month.
And they can, they have the choice to walk this stage in either NLC or for us. So it's up to them what they want to do. And hopefully, they will be on time. The credit recover program, credit recovery program there is pretty good. Early intervention, so I'm starting, I'm looking at ninth and 10th graders already to see who's falling behind. Getting intervention set up with them. We have the MTA or MTSS, which is a multi-tier support system that the state wants us to use. It has three levels of interventions. We're really working hard on that just to make sure that, you know, the credit recovery doesn't have to happen as much. Winter homecoming, just a FYI. We had, Trista Bongard was our queen and Ben Thompson was our king. And all the kids were good. We had a dance on Friday that went well.
How the kids were good.
Good. Yay, it was, it went well, the dress-up days were awesome. And we also did, those are our dress-up days. So we had hat and jersey, superhero villain, NHL, NFL, color explosion, your favorite color, Flannel Friday. So I think the, the one that went the best was Flannel Friday. I think a lot of people liked that. Especially teachers. Changes for next year, possible schedule change is what I want to put on your radar. We've had Channel One for many, many years. Channel One was actually a news program that happened, that went away 10 years ago.
Before I was here, I think.
Yeah.
It was about the same time I got here.
Yeah.
It's been a long time.
I got it in 1994.
Basically, in first hour, they had extra time, an extra 18 minutes, I think it was. And the teachers use that for homework makeup, getting stuff done, or to check in with kids, or things like that. More than often, it was used just for the kids to, you know, try to get ready to go. Starting next year, we are going to have a broadcast by our broadcast journalism class. About five minutes, local, regional, national news. Brady wanted to take this on, so I said, great, we can get rid of Channel One, do that instead. Spread out those minutes between the hours and have a little bit longer. It's only, only ends up to be like two or three minutes longer for each class. And we'll talk about, or you guys can decide on that later. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Starting next year's, with next year's ninth grader, students will need 22 credits instead of 21 and a half to graduate. They need a personal finance class. We do offer that now, but it's more of an elective now. It will be 10 through 12th grade that needs that before they graduate. And again, it's a semester class, starting with the ninth grader. So it's what, 2028 they graduate, I think? So just for your heads up, we'll have to change the credit requirement for graduation. And I'm done.
No, you don't.
Oh, I got two more. Registration. Again, we had a schedule for registration right now. This week, our students are going to register during their English classes in the Media Center on Wednesdays. We're going to have several people in there helping out, making sure that things look right. And during the last week and a half here, they have, teachers have talked with their kids about different courses that they should be taking, especially the math teachers. They have to be in their, their lanes that they are on. And also the alternate courses, the courses better, you know, they can choose between different ones. So that is going on now. And registration presentation, that's either.
And yeah, I just, if they wanted to.
Okay.
I just attached the actual presentation that the kids got to see and that was shared with parents.
So we went over with, last week, Wednesday, we went over with all the kids, the different, this presentation, which kind of had, oh, yeah, I forgot about that, Brooks, we need shifting belts. Okay, supporting literacy, so we're doing things for competencies or components that we're trying to hit that match up with the state's.
Thought we covered that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so part of what Brian and I sat down and talked about, kind of what we could do to help support world-class workforce at the secondary level and, you know, how we could implement that into the PLCs and professional development that we're offering the high school teachers. And it looked like the best way to, the, what we were going to look to support was literacy at this point. And that's kind of what our focus is going to be on for the rest of the year is how secondary teachers can support literacy in a social studies classroom, a math classroom, all of the different. You know, end result, we would love to see the reading scores go up, correct? But it is everybody's responsibility to teach literacy. But I think in order to do that, we have to provide teachers skills to be able to teach literacy. A social studies teacher isn't necessarily trained to teach literacy standards. But we, so we're working with them. And I will say, I even said this at the PLC, that I was so impressed with the secondary staff and their engagement in a PLC and their discussions that took place. And I even said this, that I, I was shocked compared to, just, they were just so engaged. And, and really, you know, one teacher said, well, we don't care about it, we'll do it too, right? So it was a really great experience. We went over, like, this is going to be a multiple-part training that we're going to do on PLCs. And we're trying to stretch it out because we don't want to make it overwhelming for staff or feel like it's one more thing that they have to do. So we're trying to do our best to make it doable. But first of all, just going over, like, what are the essential components at the secondary level of literacy? Does a social studies teacher understand what fluency is? And how they can support fluency in their classroom? So we went over that. This was just a quote that I have had for all of the staff. Just basically trying to explain how important it is that all of us support literacy and when kids are leaving us upon graduation, that they're able to be literate and successful in that respect. The essential question that we had for staff was how can we work together as a system to improve students' reading and literacy skills? And so we had kind of three learning targets, trying to show kind of what, what we would want teachers to model in their classroom. You've got an essential question, and then you've got targets that you want the students to reach. So our first learning target through this first PLC was that staff would be exposed to the ELA standards. So, and then determine which standards might be best supported in their subjects. There's a, many, many different ELA standards. Some work best in a math class, some work best in a, in an industrial tech class. When we're talking about like informational text, that is taught very differently in a math classroom versus what you're teaching to understand literature in, let's say, an English classroom. So this was their task for our first PLC. And we followed it up with the next PLC being a conversation as a whole staff on what were some of the things that they came up with. And like I said, it was, was really very intuitive. I think our focus will move next time to vocabulary, because that seemed to pop up, that they all kind of wanted to focus on vocabulary and teaching vocabulary in their subject matters. Okay, so I'm going to move on to career pathways. So I've kind of developed some goals for myself as far as how I would, would work to implement these for next four years. So this is kind of just, my first goal was to build relationships with staff at Chisholm High School. And there are amazing people here. I have seriously enjoyed my time. And, and I feel like everyone has been very welcoming and wants to get to work to get things done. So, you know, Brian, Teresa, and I love Mary Jo, they've all been so welcoming. And I just feel like we've, we've made a good team together. I've spent some time with Jennifer Fleming. And we worked on kind of establishing what her baseline is right now for her work-based learning program. And then kind of worked through, her and I had a meeting with this Department of Labor to talk about what's called YST. I'm going to tackle what that is in a little bit. We actually got all of the industrial tech classes that Janie teaches, YST approved already. Because all we had to do was send in his core syllabuses, so he's already YST approved. So now it's just a matter of finding those YST employers, and I'll talk more about this in a second, to be able to place kids in work-based learning that aren't 18. Because right now, the law says they have to be 18, but if you're YST approved, you don't have to be 18. Working with the Industrial Tech Department, we've come up with establishing a trades pathway. We're still working on it. Sarah Brest has been amazing. She is going to offer an intro to healthcare careers course next year. In order to kick off the healthcare pathway, I think we need to get, we need to generate student interest. They need to see like all the things, healthcare, and start to figure out like what are their interests. And then we start to work with the Science Department to look at what those pathways might look like. Is it a forensics class? Is it microbiology? What are their interests going to be in? And so Sarah, and I could say this, for you having the opportunity to have Sarah to teach courses is such a, a positive piece for your district. Because trying to find someone that's actually licensed to teach CNA at the high school level is very difficult, because teachers do not have that long-term care facility experience that's required for CNA. And you've got that with Sarah, which is awesome. I've worked with Betsy in the Art Department. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the grant that we worked on together. We're hoping to develop an arts and communication pathway for the 2526 school year. And Brady is all on board with that as well. Jennifer has been amazing in the counseling department. We've, you know, worked through several things and, and having her be a part of all of this. And just generally, all the staff has been awesome. So kudos to the district for everything. Goal two was, for me, was grant writing. And so first, the first grant that I wrote was called a C, a Career and Technical Ed Mini Grant. And we received $5,000 for the Chisholm District. The grant that I wrote basically had the Art Department developing a logo for the Chisholm Pathways. And then working with Bark Design to graphically have that logo and then look at what marketing products we want to purchase to then go out into the community to kind of kick off our pathways. So I will eventually come back to you so you can see what that logo looks like. So the second grant that I am in the process of working on is called the YST Grant through the Department of Labor Industry. Currently, Hibbing is in its second year of this, second cycle of this grant. The first cycle was $95,000. This cycle, we're in a $57,000, a two-year grant. So I hope to write a grant for Chisholm that mirrors kind of what we did in Hibbing to get the pathways kicked off. But the youth skills training program is, this is all a huge learning curve for me. As a high school math teacher and principal and elementary principal, I'm learning a lot about the labor industry. But the YST program is very specific. And so what, some of the things that, that we have written into the grant in Hibbing is all the kids in the Industrial Tech Department get OSHA trained. So they leave here and they're OSHA trained, and that OSHA training is paid for through the grant. Money for field trips for us to go out and see different places. Bringing speakers in, purchasing equipment, like we can purchase actual shop equipment with this grant if we write it into that. But the occupations that we have to focus on in order to get the grant money is manufacturing, agriculture, automotive, healthcare, and information technology. And so as I see it for this first round, I would focus on the healthcare piece. And then you're manufacturing an automotive by working with the Industrial Tech Department and then with Sarah. So we'll see, to be determined. Goal three for me was establishing the pathways for next year. And we've come up with the trades and the healthcare. We are going to work on marketing with Bark Design, what the course progression would look like in that. You know, if a kid's going to be in the trades pathway, what courses should they be taking in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade? And then also trying to incorporate along the way possible SITS courses. So I recently met with an machine instructor from Lake Superior College over in Hibbing. And he's very interested in trying to develop partnerships with high school teachers so that we can possibly come up with some SITS courses that kids in the trades can be able to get. So then they're ahead of the game when they're going out on graduation and trying to get into that programming. They've already taken some of those courses. And then community partnerships. So Janie came up with a list. I said, come up with a list of places that you would like to possibly partner with for the trades pathway. And so he's given me this list. I am currently going to start to reach out to these and, and see who would be interested in being a partner. But again, I don't want to get ahead of the game. Like, I'd like to have that marketing piece and those, you know, those pieces, possibly the grant, to be able to go out and say, several of these are, I, we already partner with in Hibbing. And I know that they are open and interested in taking more students. So Mike, I'll probably be talking to you about ISD 695 here, that he wants to partner with. And then healthcare, I've had some brief conversations with like the ambulance service and some, and Fairview about trying to get partnerships with them. So I think people are excited in the communities about this. They, they love the opportunity to be involved in, in what's happening in the high schools and, and being partners. And then just starting to look at what pathways we may want to establish for the 2526 school year. And if there are any goals that you have that you would like me to focus on, I am always open to feedback. So please let me know.
Just an aside, working with Carrie has been like working with the Energizer Bunny. She gets me going. We get a lot done when she's in our building.
Under the healthcare, does that include veterinary? Because so many kids talk about being a vet. Right, so does that at all include them being able to maybe?
I would like to see it, because I think kids, what kids don't understand is to go into veterinary medicine. You basically have to take the same load as like a doctor would in pre-vet. They should know that, right? So I think the intro to healthcare piece is going to touch on all of those different fields. And then how we branch out is kind of what student interest is. Okay.
Any other questions for Brian or Carrie?
I just want to jump all the way back to the beginning, Brian, on the testing, using the STAR testing.
Yeah.
Are you, you still using that this winter?
No, no, it, no, it was more adequate for our offer to do it versus our.
Okay.
And plus through MVE, we have to pick one of the, the research-based assessments. And Starbase or STAR isn't one of, or they, yeah, no, I don't think they are one of them, especially for our younger. So that's why we switched over to FastBridge.
STAR works better with the older kids and FastBridge works better with the younger kids.
Okay, so I was kind of wondering why we wouldn't use it in, you know, in all the schools. Thank you.
And of course, the state hasn't come up with a recommendation for grades four and up yet. So we'll wonder to see what they're going to recommend.
The thing I like to hear is, was brought up early, where did the students start? Where did they finish? So are they making progress? The testing is to be overdone. And so if a student started out as a C student in September and in May they're an A student, I believe we've done our job. And, and that's what I'd kind of like to see, progress. That's the way I think to go.
We were at the conference a couple weeks ago, and so much on agriculture. So much information and so much free curriculum that they have to offer. And I, I was like, it was everywhere. So I mean, when you mentioned that, I thought, well, that, yeah, because I mean, I got some information on it. And there's a lot of it out there and a lot of free stuff, so.
Right, that is, their district has a, a large number of agriculture courses.
Yeah.
There's like a connection with the U of M right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's great.
Anything else for Brian or Carrie? If not, uh.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Winker, your.
Pop right up. Still care. Well, I didn't bring a PowerPoint, so thanks for that. Next time, I missed that memo, but I won't, it won't be that long.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Just to let you know, we had our workshop day today and want to thank the wellness committee for doing that. I don't know, was the llama here? I never saw the llama.
Oh, yeah.
You might see a picture on Facebook. A superintendent inside the building with a couple of llamas.
Yeah.
A little closer.
Yeah, they came into my office, but it happened to be somewhere else in the building, so I didn't.
And she has a custodian retired. It would have given me a nervous tick.
I know that, so, yeah, we did see, we didn't see the llamas, they were in the building. So, um, and one of the other things the wellness committee heard is that teachers wanted some time in their rooms. And so they had a lot of work time today, and then they could choose some other wellness activities. I know there was dodgeball planned and some different art projects and some yoga. And so people that wanted to take advantage of it took advantage of it. And if they wanted to check off some of the things that they had to do, they did that in their classrooms today. So it was a great day, and then we had a wonderful meal that was provided as well, which was very tasty too. So it was very nice to have some social with people. Some of the upcoming things, fifth grade is going to Starbase at the, or beginning of February. And that's five days, they have a lot of hands-on technology, so they're getting pumped for that and lots of organization. And thanks to Amy Rosini and Stephanie Jensen for working hard and putting all that together. We are also planning for a someone special at the elementary here, February 14th. I think PT, or the PTSA sent, I think, school board members. If you can help, come join us and just be there to greet people and take money if those that didn't sign up previously, that would be great.
What was that date again?
Um, it's February 14th, I believe. It's from like 10 to 12, we would have used, what's that?
I don't think I got anything from it, yes, for some of the last.
I thought Jen said something.
She'll call me, she'll.
Oh, I worry, I'll, because I thought I saw a message from Jen.
Well, I got it, and they did stuff, and they're like, no, we don't want you.
Oh, yeah. I know, I said, I'll be curious, which is the fifth and sixth grade, I want to do it.
Oh, well, she told me she gets to invite as many people as she wants. I'm like, oh.
I'll make sure you get that, because we would really love people to help check in families when they come. So it was super successful at the bond and want to continue that. And there's a book here too that will be tied to that during those times. We also had an end of the quarter PBIS reward party here at the CE building. And the students got to pick their top three choices and move from classrooms for about 50 minutes. There was Legos, arts games, card games, dice game, and I believe it was, kids were pretty excited about that. I've gotten some really great feedback. And that's all in celebration of their hard work and showing blue straight pride. So that was an awesome day. We have started in our monitoring students' growth and progress. We're in our third round of FastBridge testing. And we'll look forward to seeing the growth there and making adjustments and interventions that need to take place with that. And last thing, Chaz Wegner is coming on Wednesday, I believe, and he's doing our. And last thing, Chaz Wagner is coming on Wednesday, I believe, and he's doing our winter storytelling. So we look forward to that. And he had a powwow last month, and that was, that's always amazing. And so we're super glad to be able to have him as our indigenous coordinator. He's a blessing to the district in my eyes, so, yeah, so lots more going on, but, um, I'll stop at that. Anything else?
Any questions from this winter?
Third quarter, it's hard to believe. We're on our way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our athletic tractor. Anything, Travis?
Hi.
Hi.
I don't have a whole lot. I have been busy, like usual. Winter sports are going well. Everything's off and running. We had homecoming week, which I'm still tired from, but it went very well. Kids enjoyed it. I get, you know, lots of compliments and stuff. We had a rock, paper, scissors competition that Mrs. Purdy put together, which was pretty phenomenal. I mean, I haven't seen kids interact, and all kids interact at that level, just for a simple, you know. Of course, I lost my beach right away, so. But Mr. Hake, on the other hand.
Who won?
Yeah. Andrew Sunquist.
Oh, okay.
Was the overall winner. Yeah, so we did the championship round right before the pep coronation, so they could be onstage. It was, it was good. It was fun. Mr. Hake told you Ben and Tressa were our king and queen, so that went well. The dance did go very well. I shortened it. I went to two hours instead of three for the dance, and it was very well received. I think that three hours can get kind of long, and everyone was on the dance floor and participating, so it was really good. So, yeah, so I don't have a whole lot of other things for you. Started the third quarter, so good news, bad news for some people, depending on how they did for second quarter. So that'll be coming out this week. I've already talked to all the coaches about that, so they're aware of that. The only other thing I have for you is we are doing a staff order for this sweatshirt. I got lots of requests for it, so if you would like to be part of that order, just shoot me an email.
Does he have questions for me?
Any questions for Travis?
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you didn't have anything to report on, however, if the board has any questions for Mike? Okay, moving on. Item six, approving the consent agenda. These are the minutes of the January 8th, 2024 meeting, reorganizational and regular meetings.
I will make the motion.
Motion by Director.
We went through these very thoroughly, guys.
I'll second.
Point by Director Crowley Simon. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, personnel. Motion to approve Jennifer Zabotnick Martin's request into the Minnesota State University of Morehead doctoral program in educational leadership, along with obtaining a principal superintendent's licensure as presented.
So made.
Motion by Director Crowley Simon.
Support.
Support by Director Rice. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve the hiring of John Foley to job number 194, level two baseball coach, effective March 18th, 2024.
No motion approval.
Motion by Director Raha.
I'll second.
Support by Director Crowley Simon. Mr. Foley is here, and we appreciate that. John, I just wanna say good luck to you. Hope you do well, and it's, it's nice. I hope you do real well. And it's nice to have somebody who's just been hired attending the meeting. Thank you very much for that.
And happy anniversary.
Their anniversary, isn't it?
It's their anniversary.
And they're here?
And, yeah, you made him come to the meeting.
There's a Snicker bar in Lisa's. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John. Item number eight, business, motion to approve the Child Chisholm Early Childhood Parent Handbook as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Director Renasodder.
Support.
Support by Director Crowley Simon. Any discussion on this? You're going through it, it didn't seem like there was any significant change at all, so.
No, it's pretty basic, yeah. And this is. This is written by the director, then?
Yeah.
With the help of, I'm assuming, our staff, cuz the director runs both of them?
Yeah. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I are just notifications, is that correct, Lisa, at this time?
No, A through G are approvals, so you can do it in one. Because there's. Yeah, then, you got it.
I will go through these. You meant B through G.
I was sorry, yeah.
Approved policy number 410, family and medical leave. Approved policy 416, drug and alcohol and cannabis testing. I noticed on this that there is just the, in some places, we added the words cannabis and eliminated some renumbering. Item D, approved policy 416, which is forms, and those are showing the new cannabis that's taking hold. Approved policy 506, discipline, some new definitions, and a policy in what needs to be, must be established. Something such as recess and dismissal. That's in approving the discipline of complaint procedure. And all, item G, approved policy 507, corporal punishment and prude restraint. And I entertain a motion to approve those items.
No motion approval.
Motion by Director Raha.
Support.
Support by Director Rice. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H is just the first reading of policy 606, textbooks and instructional materials. That'll come back to us at a later date. Item I is the first reading of policy 606.5, library materials. Again, that'll come back to us at a later date. Item J, we just added this. It's Robert's Rules of Order. I'd like to have that, just formality, how we operate our meetings and gives us a good guideline.
So made.
Motion by Director Crowley Simon.
Support.
Support by Director Raha. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for consideration on that. Discussion, item nine. Anybody?
I just wanna thank, I know Carl mentioned it too, but Aubrey Rupert was kind of in our homeless community too for putting together a day today. It was really good, so to sit down and just have a lunch together, provided by the teachers' union, they pay for it, and a few activities. So it was, hopefully, a good day for most people today, but Aubrey Rupert was kind of behind that. Just wanna make sure she's recognized, along with Mrs. Z and the Wellness Committee.
Anybody else? I just want to, myself, Mr. Morrison, Director Rice, and Director Lappi attended the MSBA conference. There was actually some, I felt as though it was good discussion or good information on AI and where it's headed and how our teachers can look out for AI-generated type reports. And the one thing that, that really stuck with me is what the presenter was saying was AI isn't going to, isn't taking the place of people. It's the people who are not, what's the word I'm looking for, who are not familiar with AI will probably, they'll be less marketable, per se. So what he's, what he was saying is, to keep your job, you gotta be, or to get a job, you gotta be more familiar with AI and how it's, how it's used, what it's used for, and its pros and its cons. So I, I thought that was fairly interesting. And also attended a meeting from the High School League, rules on transferring. Kind of sounds like they're getting a little more restrictive on that. Can't just jump from school to school, year to year, to find your, your best team or your best extracurricular activity, I should say. So that's a couple of things that I got out of the meeting. Director Rice, if you wanna add anything there?
Like I said, they just, you know, you pick up some good ideas. I got some stuff here for the Wellness Community that I will talk to and bring to them. But, yeah, agriculture was a big thing, big thing.
That's because of like the kind of farm-to-tape, table movement and so much with, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, but there was.
I mean, we do have a lot of agricultural for the state, but up here, we don't seem to focus on that as much anymore.
But, yeah.
It was good.
Southern parts, for sure.
Person we ran into during the, what do you call it, get to know the vendors or whatever, was a former Chisholm grad who sells the prefab panels for the buildings.
Oh, yeah.
And when we kind of let him know what we were doing, his eyes lit up. And he actually was only two hours over from Widseth. Went and introduced himself to them and has gotten information. And hopefully, he'll be one of the subcontractors, should everything work out. Anything else? Item 10, January 2024 enrollment numbers. As Mr. Morrison stated before, you can see a slight decrease. Not too bad, I would say. We've had a few new kids come into the school district also. One or two from Texas, and they were a little bit surprised at the weather the other day.
It's nice out this week?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's nice. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make, I'll support.
Director Raha, supported by Director Renasodder. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Time is 5:45.